It may need all rise of the official session, Commissioner Mark Whitto.
Thank you Sheriff. Let's start the meeting with a prayer from Josh Gillum. Before we pray, there any requests?
Chuck Johnson.
Remember Maggie Ember who is still recovering in hospital? Mark has been keeping us up day and on Facebook with her. Glad to see God is doing miracles in her life.
He's working. Y'all keep praying for him.
Keep our county and our state, our nation a republic in prayer.
Amen.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for letting us be gathered here today. We thank you for where we live here in Hawkins County and all the people that make it so great. Lord, we pray for each of these requests. Lord, for Stephanie and her daughter. Lord, we just pray that you continue to work in that situation. We pray for Chuck Johnson, Lord, that you would just be with him, his family. Lord, we just pray that you would meet every need that's in this room and in this community and across our country. Lord, as only you can. And thank you most of all for dying on the cross for our sins. Thank you for saving me when I was 11 years old, changed my heart and life. I ask God in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Do a pledge to the flag. Jason Rhodes.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty that does this wrong.
Can you take your seats? Call the meeting to order and Ash Davis to do a roll call, please.
We have 14 commissioners present and the county mayor.
Awesome. Everybody's here. Thank you so much. Let's listen to the conflict of interest statement. Go right ahead.
All right. Those of you that acknowledge you have an indirect conflict of interest, namely Jeff Barrett, Joey Maddox, and Chad Britton, you acknowledge that's a conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this meeting?
I do.
I do.
And the record reflect that all have done so.
All right, good deal. Moving on down, I need to read something into the minutes. The following have been filed in the Hawkins County Clerk's office, and we need to read them in the February 27, 2023 minutes. Hawkins County Trustees Office Fund Report Financial Summary for October 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022. Reappointment of Wayne Hahn as a Commissioner of Segwaysville Utility District for a four-year term commencing February 21, 2023 and ending midnight February 20, 2027. Also, reappointment of Gordell Ely as Commissioner of the Persia Utility District of Hawkins County for the term commencing March 1, 2023 and ending midnight February 28, 2027. So let's let the minutes reflect those announcements, please. On down to commendations and recognition. Want to do a couple of things. William Phillips didn't get here. I want to talk briefly about the Court Security Committee report. I emailed it to all of the commissioners. If you did not get one, please let me know because that's going to be crucial in some decisions we have to make on down the road. So please read that over. If you didn't get one, let me know. Just want to announce that we've been trying for a long time to get Phipps Bend Road paved, and we couldn't, of course, couldn't find room for it in the county budget. We didn't put it as part of ARPA, but through some connections at Tennessee, First Tennessee Development District, I learned about the State Industrial Access Program. It's not necessarily a grant. It's just money available from T-Dot, Tennessee Department of Transportation, to pave roads inside industrial areas. Informed last week that we've been approved to do that, and T-Dot is going to go ahead and pave that road. That's a million-dollar-plus project that we are not going to have to pay for. Nancy, do you have any more comment on that one?
No, just thankful that we got it. Appreciate everybody that worked on it. It was a group effort to get that done, and we certainly appreciate everybody that worked on it. Can't wait to get it done. We've got two industries coming in, and some of them, them coming in was sort of contingent on trying to get a good road in there for them to use. And so this is going to help us not only get these two industries open, but we've got two more that are looking at us. And so hopefully we'll get those in the next year or so.
It's certainly going to make Phipps Bend look very attractive. And we've got a full-time maintenance person out there now who is really keeping things neat. And it's just, it's looking good. So I appreciate everybody working on that. Crystal Jesse, would you like to come forward?
You have a resolution on your agenda tonight that I wanted to make sure I came over and addressed.
Pull the mic down a little bit. Thank you.
Sorry. You have a resolution on your agenda tonight that I wanted to make sure that I came over and addressed, and is to accept the second settlement of our series. And that settlement is for five big companies, being Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, and Allergan. What that will do, that will put us back into the payment plan over a course of a few years. Walmart will pay off their portion the quickest, being six years, and the longest being Walgreens, a 15-year span. However, this settlement will almost mirror identically the last settlement with the other three. So the numbers-wise should just double your numbers going forward. So what you expect, when we get the mass majority to opt-in, then we'll have the exact breakdown. But right now, we're basing our settlement figures off of what we settled for on the first series. So that settlement, I'm here as your county attorney urging you to accept it and approve it tonight. That will allow your mayor to opt into this settlement. As you know, you've had abatement funds, close to, I think, $300,000 come up from our portion of the first settlement. This will also put more money in abatement for you to use for specific things to set aside, as well as the money that comes to you with no strings attached. So with that being said, does anyone have any questions about the resolution?
I have a question, Ms. Jesse. Well, so I asked the mayor and Mr. Penning about a couple of things. So the first series of settlements, those are, we've already received some of that. What money are we receiving from that?
Okay.
Or have received or will receive?
All right. The first series of settlements with the big three in J&amp;J, you received a million dollars that will be paid out over an 18-year span. To date, sitting here today, the county should have gotten $212,230.33. The last check that you would have received would probably have been around November, and it would have been $140,000 and some change. Why you got so much upfront is that, number one, you were one of our clients and you opted in. And number two, if we got so many to opt in, part of the incentive was Johnson &amp; Johnson would pay five years upfront. So Walmart has alluded to that, too. So we look for that to mirror what happened the first time to happen the second time. But if not, we're essentially doubling your settlement, close to the same numbers as the first million dollars that you will receive.
Does any of this, the first settlement that we are already currently receiving, or any future payments we will receive from what we're approving tonight, will there be any restrictions on how that money must be spent?
No. So you have, you've received a little bit over $200,000. There's no restrictions on that at all. The money that will come directly to you, there will be no restrictions. However, the abatement fund that is part of the settlement, there of course is restrictions on that, that it has to go to drug treatment or very specific things that have to be approved by that commission. But the money coming directly from the county, just like the money you've already received, there are no restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for Ms. Jesse?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We've got a wonderful recognition coming up, and Commissioner Robbie Palmer is going to take care of it.
Y'all want to come on up? Thank you all for coming. So this is to recognize the Bulls Gap basketball team for their many accomplishments. For the members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and the Honorable Mark DeWitt Chairman, this 27th day of February 2023 recognizes Bulls Gap school 2021 and 2022, and 2022 and 2023 junior varsity and varsity boys basketball. Whereas Bulls Gap school boys varsity and junior varsity basketball teams have many accomplishments for consecutive years of 2021, 2022, 2023. The Bulls Gap Bulldogs are coached by Chris Hughes and assistant coach Matthew Short. And whereas the team consists of the following members, Bronson Mau, Parker Arnett, Lehman Blair, Kobe Short, Grant Johnson, Isaiah Jones, Stephen Barnes, Sager Houseright, Eden Smith, Liam Earl, Hayden Good, and Grayson Hughes. Whereas the JV boys have won every tournament they have played in over the last two years. They finished 2022 and 2023 season undefeated in the intercounty play and with a 20-0 undefeated season overall. 2022, 2023 JV team, they were the Bulls Gap Booster Club JV Tip Off Champions, Bulls Gap JV Christmas Tournament Champions. Like I said before, 20-0 undefeated season, undefeated in the intercounty play at 6-0. Over the last two years, they've won each year and combined records of 40 wins and one losses over the last two years. Whereas the 2022, 2023 varsity boys had a historic season with the most wins in boys history at Bulls Gap school of 21. They were undefeated in the intercounty play at 8-0 and 21-5 overall record. They finished TMSAA Area 3 Elite 8 sectional finish and 39 wins over the last two seasons. Therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Mark DeWitt and Hawkins County Board of Commissioners recognize and congratulate Bulls Gap varsity and junior varsity boys basketball team for the 2021, 2022, and 2022 and 2023 outstanding record in tournaments and regular season basketball season. Congratulations, y'all.
Hang on Robbie. Nancy's going to take the picture. Great job, fellas. Y'all are welcome to stay or go out, whatever you want to do. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on. I have five people that have signed in to speak. We have the only, only two of them I know who you represent. The rest of them didn't put that on there. So Suzanne Klein, who are you representing?
Uh, I guess the people.
Speaking on what?
The COVID vaccine.
Okay. Come on forward. You've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Klein. I graduated from East Tennessee State University with a major of science, a minor in chemistry, a concentration in organic chemistry, publications, and pharmaceutical medicine. I've been following Karen Kingston. Karen Kingston is a whistleblower for Pfizer. Her research is the reason why I decided to follow her intently. In her research, she has found that the COVID-19 vaccine is not a vaccine. It is a bioweapon. Every state in the country has a bioweapon law. She has been meeting with several states, Florida for one, New York, Indiana, Ohio, and there are a couple of others. She's been invited most recently to speak before the grand jury in Florida in Collier County. And it was the commissioners in Collier County that invited her to come out and speak. They wanted to see her research, her evidence, and her findings. After an in-depth look into her research on what she brought with her, they called her back again a week ago. And she spent 40 minutes answering a Q&amp;A before the county commissioners, and many other county commissioners from other counties in Florida came out to join. The end result was that they did find that it was a bioweapon released on the people of the United States by our government, the Department of Defense, the NIH, the NIAID, and the CDC. Following that finding, they have launched a grand jury investigation. The sheriffs in several counties so far in Florida have assured that they would proceed with arrests following the prosecutions through the grand jurors. The grand jury started prosecuting people as early as last week. Karen Kingston is also on her way to New York to meet with various county commissioners in Indiana and Ohio, and that's coming up all within this coming month. The county commissioners in Collier County in Florida have already sent back their COVID funds. They have announced that they will not take blood money. The CDC has most recently acknowledged that 5% of all the COVID vaccines went to red states. The most lethal that they are labeling as rapid kill have gone to Kentucky, Tennessee, Louisiana, and there were a couple of other states. I'm sorry right now. These rapid kill either killed upon the immediate vaccination of the people or within weeks. There's another group, there are over 300 lots, okay? And all of these lots have varying degrees of mRNA in them, and what the mRNA carry. But one thing is for sure, each one of these mRNA carry three envelopes, and the envelopes are what open up at certain periods of time.
Ms. Klein, that's your three minutes, so we need to wrap up.
Okay. My request to the commissioners, Mr. Maddox, I gave you a pile of evidence. 90% of it is Karen Kingston's. She is most relevant at this point in time. I asked you to look it over and discuss it with the other commissioners. I care about humanity, and I care about what is going on. Please look into this. And thank you for letting me speak. Everybody have a good evening and God bless.
All right. Thank you so much. I have a few other names on here, two of which don't have the agency they represent. Jody Sutherland. Jody, who do you represent?
Connections.
Okay, come on up. And just like previously, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the commissioners tonight. My name is Jody Sutherland, and I've had two articles published in the Rogersville Review that discuss the litter problem that plagues our county. I also subsequently had a conversation, a very productive conversation with Robbie Palmer about how we could work together as a community to begin to address this issue. As a commission, you all are tasked with the responsibility of addressing our county's most pressing issues. And oftentimes, the economic health of the community is what bubbles up to the top. And I would argue that the litter problem is one of the most critical issues facing our community in terms of the economic viability because it impacts every sector. It impacts tourism, business, government, housing, agriculture, the environment, and most importantly, it erodes our sense of pride in the community. And so my purpose tonight is just to get the conversation started on how we can address this, work together collectively as a community to generate some practical solutions that are cost-effective and simple to implement to begin to make Hawkins County beautiful again. One of the things that I'm doing right now is I have a four-question litter survey that's circulating the internet. And we haven't had an overwhelming response, but I'm hoping with your support that we can push that out to the constituents. Because one of the best ways to generate ideas is to simply ask for input from our community members. And so with your help, I'm hoping that we can do that. And I'm just open to any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Jody?
Jody, just to make you aware, through the Chamber of Commerce, we do a Great American Cleanup. It starts the 1st of April and goes to the 1st of June. We provide trash bags, vests, signs, whatever you need. And we've got the Cherokee Lake Cleanup, which is scheduled for April 16, I think, or 16th or 20th. I've lost the dates. But anyway, we'll be happy to work with you any way that we can. We got trash bags, gloves, and all that stuff at our office, and we'll be glad to share those with anybody that wants to come by and get them.
Yeah, thank you. And we have noticed litter pickup going on in the county, so we appreciate those efforts. I think that's from the state. My husband, just yesterday, he picked up six trash bags. These aren't, he didn't put the trash in there. It was someone dumped their trash bag. And so, you know, it's, there's 152 pieces of litter per person across the state of Tennessee. This is just the litter that is on our roadways. And so, you know, it really needs to be a community-wide effort. I'd like to see more awareness and education going on, and some simple signage being put up, just things to make the community more aware that this is a problem and how we can address it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jody. Any other questions?
Mayor DeWitt?
Yes.
Not really a question, but I talked to Ms. Sutherland, and we will be discussing more at the next Solid Waste Committee meeting, at possible options that the county commission can help.
Make sure that she's invited in there.
Absolutely, yep. So we appreciate everything you've done. And once your survey is complete, just like we talked about before, let us know, work with us on that, and we'll see what we can do.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's definitely a problem, and we need to do something to start alleviating that. So it'd be a good start. Thank you so much. All right. I've got Elena Stanley. Are you here for the Humane Society? Okay, so I've got three people signed up for the Humane Society. Which one of you is going to be designated to speak? Okay, Susan, come on up. You've got three minutes.
I have this packet here that, information that was requested from the budget meeting.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay. So I just want to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the Hawkins County Humane Society. It was brought to my attention at the budget meeting, Mr. Rhodes could not find our 990s for 2020 and 2021. I have those here. We have the 90s, and we are also have information on the grants and fundraisers that are also enclosed that were requested. I want to address being compared to the fire department. There's 12 of those receiving $30,000, and they're all required to cover their own jurisdictions. The shelter receives the same amount and services the entire county. This county is in dire straits. Animals running at large, attacking livestock, and causing havoc to the citizens. We provide very cost-effective service for the county. If we had to close our doors, it would cost the county at least $250,000 a year, not including the cost of having an animal sheltered the building. And all the costs are broken down in a spreadsheet that we also have in this packet. Our fundraising has almost doubled in the last three years from 2020 to 2022. And it seems there's been an ongoing coordinated effort to disbarge and discredit the finances of the Hawkins County Humane Society, which can affect our fundraising efforts. Our financials are in perfect order, and anyone who insinuates otherwise is misinformed at best or maliciously dishonest at worst. And with that being said, I've also enclosed all the board members' email addresses. If there's any other questions or information that you all would like to have forwarded to you, you could just go ahead and email us that, and that way we don't take up any more time with the commissions tonight.
Any questions for Ms. Proff? Okay. If you'll hand that to probably Jason on this end, we can get it distributed. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I want to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Are you on, did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
But you're with the Humane Society, correct?
I'm not with them. I'm...
But you're going to speak about that, correct?
Yes, about the extension for the animal shelter.
Okay. The animal shelter is not on the agenda tonight. We allow one speaker three minutes. And Susan did that three minutes.
I have a minute and 22 seconds left. Barbara, does she have that time?
Got a minute and 22 seconds.
My name is Mary Ann Henrickson. I live out Bunker Hill Road. I've got a minute and 22 seconds, I guess. You have a dire situation in this county, and I don't know if you gentlemen and ladies are listening to these people. I'm out at that shelter. They are overcrowded. I'll go in, I'll say, "What's your occupancy rate?" They've got cages sitting around with dogs in them. One was dumped right in front of the Humane Society the other day on the highway because the people in this county have nowhere to take these animals. As a resident of this county, and you, we are all in danger. I'm in danger when I have to dodge these dogs out on the highway, or Burrum Road, or Amy Mill. We all have to do it. You've seen it. They get run over. Or I'm in danger because somebody else is trying to dodge the dog. I've tried to catch them. I have caught some, and I try to take them over there. But if the sign is on the door and they're full, and they have to provide for this entire county, y'all, this is unacceptable. I've lived here three years. We know this. It is unacceptable. Something has to change.
Okay, it's time to wrap up, please.
Well, I'm done, but I'll be back. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all I had for people that signed in. Is there anybody else that needs to speak on any other topic? All right, seeing none. We're going to move forward with the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Go ahead and indicate on your pad, please. We got a, okay, we've got a motion from Chad Britton and a second from somebody. I think Robbie. Sorry, I jumped ahead. Hello, Dean. All right, minutes stand approved. We'll move on down to the resolutions, starting with 2023 0201, introduced by Glenda Davis.
And a couple of changes that I have to do.
Okay.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Education Commission in Regular Session met this 27th day of February 2022. Oh, is it two? 23. I thought it was three then, three. Okay. Resolution refers to approval of appointment, reappointment of County Agriculture Extension Committee. Whereas the county commission approves the County Agriculture Extension Committee appointments, reappointments as per Tennessee Code Annotated 49-50-104. And whereas the committee must be made up of at least three commissioners, two farm men and two farm women. And whereas one of the commissioners' terms and one of farm man and one farm woman terms have expired, and the Agriculture Extension Office is asking for the following persons to be approved as committee members. Commissioner Charlie Thacker. And these terms, and I won't read them, all of these terms go from January the 1st, 2023, to December the 31st, 2024. Commissioner Robbie Palmer, farm woman Lyndon J. Bryson, farm man Stacy Line. Other committee members and terms are as follows. Commissioner Nancy Barker, January the 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2023. Farm woman Aubrey Lawson, January the 1st, 2022, December the 31st, 2023. Farm man Randy Jeffries, January the 1st, 2022, December the 31st, 2023. Therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned persons be approved as members of the County Agriculture Extension Committee for the said terms of office. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor from Glenda Davis, seconded by Jason Roach. Is there any discussion? I would suggest that if you're a commissioner and you're on this list, you probably need to abstain from voting. That is up to you. Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
11 yes, three abstaining.
Okay, the resolution passes. We appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on down to 2023-0202, introduced by Nancy Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in Regular Session met this 28th day of February 28, 2023. Resolution in reference, reappointment of Bill Lines to the Hawkins County Industrial Board for another six-year term. Whereas Bill Lines has been serving on the Hawkins County Industrial Board with his term expiring December 31st, 2022. And at the January 24, 23 Industrial Board meeting, a motion was made and seconded that Bill Lines be elected for another six-year term beginning January 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2029. The Industrial Board reappointment Bill Lines term beginning January 1st, 2023, term ending December 31st, 2029. Therefore, be it resolved that Bill Lines be reappointed to the Hawkins County Industrial Board with a new expiring term ending December 31st, 2029. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Barker, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
14 yes.
All right, resolution passes. Let's move on down to 2023-0203, and introduced by Commissioner Jason Roach.
The Honorable Mayor Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in Regular Session met this 27th day of February 2023. Approval to use $430,000 of American Relief Plan Act funds for a new water line in the Pink Hill area of Hawkins County. Whereas the Budget Committee of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners met on Tuesday, January 17, 2023, to consider additional distributions of the county's ARPA funds. And whereas the committee voted unanimously to expend $430,000 of the ARPA funds to contract with Scott County Public Service Authority to install approximately two miles of water line, along with the taps for every customer that signs a water use agreement with SCPSA prior to the construction. And whereas this water line has the capability of providing clean potable water to over 50 residents of Pink Hill who have not had clean water previously. Therefore, be it resolved, the full commission approved setting aside up to, but no more than, $430,000 of ARPA funding received by the county for installation of the above water line by SCPSA. Further be it resolved, that approval be given for the following budget amendment to the other special revenue fund, 128 ARPA, and you can see that fund. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Roach, second from Commissioner Thacker. Before we get into any discussion on it, I want to point out where it says "water to over 50 residents," that probably needs to say residences. There's several people at each residence. This extension of the water line is, it's really, from the standpoint of the cost of it, Scott County Public Service Authority is going to do it as cheap or cheaper than anyone that I know. Because everybody else would have to go miles to connect to that water. So, we've discussed this a lot of times, and we've discussed it in the Budget Committee. But got Jason Roach on the board here to speak.
Mr. Chairman, this is my motion, but I have not been the one to contact Scott County Public Service, pardon me, the Scott County Utility Service. However, I did receive a question from a constituent that I was not able to answer. And so I'm hoping that somebody within can help answer this question for me. So, in this quote, it is included that taps are included in the water line, or in the quote for the water line installation. And I was encouraged to contact Lakeview Utility District, which is my utility district, to ask what it costs for a tap there. And it's between $2,100 and $2,500. I called Scott County, and they charge, they actually have quite a bit better rate than we do. It's $1,500 per tap. And so the question was, will residents along Pink Hill have to pay the tap fee? And is, or is that included in the overall quote? And like I say, it's my resolution. I should have known that answer. I just did not.
That's okay. The way that works, Commissioner Roach, is that if you sign an agreement to use the water before construction starts, your tap is free. If you want to tap on while the construction is underway, it's $750. If you want to do a tap after it's constructed, it's $1,500. So they have a sliding scale as to when you sign up. That's just, they're, of course, looking for people to sign the water agreement. If you sign up for a tap, you sign up for the minimum water fee per month, whether you use it or not. So it's 20, what is it, Danny, 24?
Representative here from Scott County.
Okay.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
That's Darian Musick of Crossroads Engineering, and Mike Dishman asked us to make yourselves available to answer any questions you may have, and hopefully I can do that.
Yeah, so I'll ask you this question. Is the inclusion of that tap fee, so according to Mayor DeWitt, it's kind of an incentive to get folks on the utility. Is that include, does that tap fee, is it built into the overall cost of the installation? Or is that something that Scott County is doing as an incentive to run that line?
It's both. There is a line item in the budget for constructing those meter settings. So I guess the funds, the funds that are requested inclusive of the tap fee. But also the PSA's policy for the last few years, if you sign during the planning stages or prior to construction and commit to a 10-year service agreement, they do waive the connection fee. The $1,500 connection fee that's normally advertised on their websites are the user agreements. Those apply to requests that come after construction has started or after the contractor's left, and the PSA has to mobilize to set those. It's my understanding there's no additional cost other than a $50 $50 admin fee and a $50 refund.
So I guess my question then is, if part of Scott County's procedures are to incentivize, you know, in other construction, not Pink Hill, in other construction of water lines, to incentivize, did you say no cost to tap on to a new water line?
There, if it's in the planning stages and it's prior to receiving funding, yes, it is to encourage people to sign, but also to encourage them to stay customers.
So I guess my question is, if that's the case in other construction of water lines, then is Scott County, would they not offer this utility, this new water line, with the same procedure, where they wouldn't charge inside the funding piece? They wouldn't have a line item for tap fees?
I guess it's normal to have those construction costs included in those budgets also. Because normally, there's a loan component and some grant component also. But it's not, the user fees alone are not sufficient to cover the operational maintenance costs plus the construction costs. Now, if the tap, if the cost of the meter settings were pulled out of this budget, and I think in this budget, we had right around $46,000 to install the taps. If that was pulled out, then, you know, go back to the customers as an expense. I understand the question that, you know, there's an appearance of double dipping into this cost. But, you know, the capital costs would still have to be paid. And there's very little recovered on the monthly pay.
Okay. And just to clarify, I guess the question that I have is based on what you told me about new constructions of water lines in other places. You incentivize signing up to those water lines by not including a tap fee. And I think it's, I think Pink Hill needs water. I agree that they need water. I guess I'm just, my question comes from that line item that's built in for $46,000 for the tap fees that may not be included in other projects in other places from Scott County, I think, or do you include that?
They're always included.
Okay. Even if it's, even if they don't have to pay that fee upfront for the tap, the residents don't have to pay that fee, that's still included in the capital outlay project?
It would be included in the budget, but it would not be expended if those customers, if we project 100 customers in a project, we may budget for the full 100. But as the project develops, if 80 sign, only 80 get installed, and the budget's reflected at the end. And likewise, we have, we assume 48, that may be, hopefully, a little low, maybe it'll be more than 50. But if only 40 end up signing, 45, then, you know, it'll just come off the cost of construction. We will, we will not construct a meter setting at any location where that agreement's not in place.
Is that all, Commissioner Ruff?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, next we have Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you. Sir, could you tell me, in your proposal and your estimate and things like that, looks like you're going to run approximately two miles of water line. Does your project include fire hydrants down this water line?
No, the design that we've established at this point is only for domestic service. The hydraulic grade or the pressure available from Scott County Public Service Authority in that system is not sufficiently high to sustain fire flow. If it was, at a minimum, we would have to change the size of the lines from four inch to six inch, and most likely have to add storage facilities. And, of course, that would drive the cost up considerably. But there is no fire flow available with the project, only domestic service.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Is that all, Commissioner Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Thacker.
There is fire hydrants close to the Virginia line. In any far water line you have swept, fire hydrants. Chances are, you're going to have to drive two miles or more to get to a fire hydrant on any road. So there is water near the Virginia line that's got a fire hydrant back.
Yes.
He's got the same breakdown I have on the cost of everything. How much the water line costs, how much the meters cost, the engineering cost, all of that on this list. They've got costs that are also.
Anything else, Commissioner Thacker? Any other questions? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
14 yes.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you, please.
Let's go on to 2023-0204, introduced by Commissioner Maddox.
To the Honorable Mayor, Mark DeWitt, Chairman of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in the Regular Sessions met the 27th day of February 2023. Resolution refers to approval of speed limit restrictions on G. Derrick Road. Whereas the state of Tennessee allows for counties to set speed limits on county roads. And whereas the county road committee met on Tuesday, January 24, 2023, and votes set speed limit on the Florence Sed Road, set at 30 mile an hour, G. Derrick Road from County Valley Road to Dead End. Therefore, it be resolved that the speed limit mentioned above be approved for G. Derrick Road in Hawkins County, in Hawkins County Highway in part in place. Speed limit, speed limit signed on Saturday.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Maddox, second from Commissioner Britton. Any questions? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
14 yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 2023-0205, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, County Mayor and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in Regular Session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution reference, approval of standard mileage reimbursement rating, pardon me, approval of standard mileage reimbursement rate increase to .655 cents per mile effective March the 1st, 2023, as per state rates. Whereas the county recognizes the state rate for mileage reimbursement as the guide for the county's reimbursement rate for all county departments. Whereas effective January the 1st, 2023, the state of Tennessee approved an increase for the mileage reimbursement rate to .655 cents per mile. Therefore, be it resolved that approval be given by the county commission to adopt the state mileage reimbursement rate as the county's rate effective March the 1st, 2023.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Roach, second from Commissioner Gibson. Is there any questions? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
13 yes, one abstaining.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to Resolution 2023-0206, and that is introduced by Commissioner Palmer.
To the Honorable Mayor, Mark DeWitt, Chairman and the Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission in Regular Session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution in reference authorizing Hawkins County to join the state of Tennessee and other local governments as participants in the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement and approving the related settlement agreements. Whereas the opioid epidemic continues to impact communities in the United States, the state of Tennessee, and Hawkins County, Tennessee. And whereas Hawkins County has suffered harm and will continue to suffer harm as a result of the opioid epidemic. And whereas the state of Tennessee and some Tennessee local governments have filed lawsuits against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers, including many federal lawsuits by Tennessee counties and cities that are pending in the litigation caption in reference National Prescription Opioid Litigation, MDL number 2804. The MDL case is referred to as the opioid litigation. And whereas certain pharmacies have proposed settlements at Hawkins County, find acceptable and in the best interest of the community. and in the best interest of the community. And whereas the Tennessee Legislature enacted Public Chapter Number 491 during the 2021 regular, regular session of the 112th Tennessee General Assembly, and was signed into law by Governor Bill Lee on May 24, 2021, which addresses the allocation of funds from certain proposed opioid litigation settlements. And whereas the state of Tennessee, non-litigating counties, and representatives of various local governments involved in the opioid litigation, have proposed a unified plan for the allocation and use of certain prospective settlement and bankruptcy funds from opioid-related litigation, settlement funds. And whereas the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement, the Tennessee Plan, sets forth a framework of unified, of a unified plan for the proposed allocation and use of settlement funds. And whereas participation in the settlements in Tennessee Plan by a large majority of Tennessee cities and counties will materially increase the amount of settlement funds that Tennessee will receive from pending proposed opioid settlements. Now therefore be it resolved by the county commission of Hawkins County, Tennessee, Section 1, that Hawkins County finds that participation in the Tennessee Plan is in the best, best interest of Hawkins County and its citizens, because such a plan would ensure an effective structure for the commitment of settlement fund to abate and seek to resolve the opioid epidemic. Section 2, that Hawkins County hereby expresses its support for a unified plan for the allocation and use of settlement funds that generally described in the Tennessee Plan. Section 3, that the Hawkins County Mayor is hereby expressly, expressly authorized to execute the Tennessee Plan and any formal agreement necessary to implement a unified plan for the allocation and use of settlement fund that is substantially consistent with the Tennessee Plan in this resolution. Section 4, that the Hawkins County Mayor is hereby expressly authorized to execute any formal agreement and related documents evidencing Hawkins County agreement to the settlement of claims and litigation specifically related to Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, and Allergan. Section 5, that the Hawkins County Mayor is authorized to take such act, such other action as necessary and appropriate to effectuate Hawkins County participation in the Tennessee Plan and these settlements. Section 6, this resolution is effective upon adoption, the welfare of Hawkins County, Tennessee requiring it. I so move.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Palmer, second from Commissioner Clance. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries, thank you. Resolution 2023-02-07, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and members of this Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution reference budget amendment, general fund. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
14, yes.
All right, motion carries. Resolution 2023-02-08, again, presented by Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution reference budget amendments, other special revenue fund 128 for assessor of property, that is ARPA. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Palmer. Any discussion? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
14, yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Resolution 2023-02-09, also introduced by Commissioner Roach.
To the Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution in reference budget amendment, other special revenue, ARPA Fund 128 for Hawkins County Emergency Management Use. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
A motion from Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Thacker. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Maddox.
Two miles you go from your vehicle, Jamie, can you tell me a little bit about your, your fleet? Okay, as far as our fleet, we have a 2013 Ford F-250. It's obviously our best vehicle. It's, it's a 2013 F-250, and that's our primary vehicle that we use, and it's, it's obviously our best vehicle in our fleet. It'll be moved down to secondary service if, if we were to get another vehicle. Our other vehicles that we have in our fleet's a 2004 Ford Expedition, and it's got a, these mileage estimates are a little bit aged, but it's got, got 182,000 on it. And we have a 1996 flat B, that, I'm not sure the mileage on it, but it's not really capable of running calls that need to be gotten to quickly. It runs about 65 mile an hour, and it, it will make sure and jar you on the way down there. And we had a 2004 F-350 up until about two years ago that we returned to the sheriff's office, and added it for a work crew vehicle, it's a military surplus vehicle. We returned that vehicle to them. Eric can test in my budget, where I overrun every single year. We're, we're usually discussing it three or four months, and just because of the age of fleet of this vehicle, these vehicles, we have, we have $2,000 to maintain all these vehicles, if I'm not mistaken. And, and that's always the first line we overrun this budget. To kind of tell how new vehicles help out the fleet versus buying used vehicles, that 2013's got 112,000 miles on it. Other than wearable parts like brakes, belts, oil changes, stuff like that, we put two intakes on that truck since it was new, so very minimal maintenance. We definitely can't say that about any of our other vehicles that we have. We've been fortunate with that vehicle to have very, very low maintenance cost on it compared to the rest of our fleet. Like I say, those, those items are typically pretty cheap, and it's the first thing me and Eric's looking at, is we're overrunning that maintenance budget every single year, so.
Do you mean, are you gonna sell any of these vehicles, or are you just gonna keep them back out, Jamie?
When, when we had to take that 2, that 2004 F-350 out of service, it eliminated our being able to replace it with a new shop, or if we have multiple responders. I've got four responders responding out in the field. Sometimes we're all available, sometimes we're hooked to a trailer, take it to the scene, get a ride back to get another trailer, and, and shuttle equipment like that, if it's a, if it's an extreme emergency. So my plan is to take that Expedition and make it a backup vehicle, it's still suitable enough for that, and that way it's there if, if one of those responders is available that doesn't typically have a vehicle. The way we do our vehicles, as far as, say if I'm out of service for two weeks and know I'm gonna be out of service, my staff, someone comes and gets that vehicle if they're in a, in a vehicle that's not in as good a shape, not as equipped for the job, they'll come get the primary vehicle from my house to use during that time.
What kind of vehicle are you looking at?
Uh, the way this will work is we'll put a SPAC out, which is 3/4 ton, gas, four-wheel drive, crew cab, vinyl seats, rubber floor, this is not, this won't be a super luxurious vehicle or anything like that, but just the, the cheapest thing that meets our needs. And where we get into needing that larger vehicle with that 3/4 ton is our radio sites we go on to and our towing that we do. We've got one trailer that's about 34 foot long, you definitely want enough brakes to get that thing stopped if, if you have an emergency, so that's, that's what we do as far as that.
Would you consider alternative, instead of a, a new vehicle to a good used vehicle, Jamie? And I just say, I just ask.
I'm always open for any opportunity that's out there, but with that being said, we've, we've seen before with used vehicles what we get into as far as maintenance. If we do a used vehicle, I mean, we definitely would like to increase maintenance. We spend a fortune to keep used vehicles on the road, and my department and, and another sheriff spends a lot of money on used vehicles too, just trying to, trying to keep those on the road. I'm not too good to drive a used vehicle, I've, I've had 1985 trucks that I, that I love, but I don't think the county allows four to five miles to a gallon that I got in those vehicles either, so. Thank you. Okay, if anybody has any questions?
Anything else, Commissioner Maddox?
No, sir, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please. You thinking or you gonna vote? Somebody play the Jeopardy theme song.
14, yes.
All right, thank you, motion carries. Let's move on to 2023-02-10.
To the Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution in reference budget amendment, other special revenue, ARPA Fund 128 for the Highway Department. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I think we've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Palmer. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. 2023-02-11, also introduced by Commissioner Roach.
The Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met this 27th day of February 2023. Resolution in reference to the budget amendment, Highway Fund. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Thacker. Any discussion of questions? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please. Motion carries. Moving on to 2023-02-12, introduced by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met the 27th day of February 2023. Resolution in reference general purpose school fund budget. Whereas the Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached budget amended to the general purpose school fund, and now request approval of set amendment by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session February 27, 2023, go on record as passing this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a motion from Commissioner Barker, second from Commissioner Clance. Any questions? Any comments? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
My resolution.
13, yes, one abstaining.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to 2023-02-13, introduced by Mr. Gibson.
Motion to accept listener Republican as presented.
All right, motion from Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Maddox. Any questions? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
14, yes.
All right, motion carries. We've got an out-of-order resolution we'd like to present, need to have a motion to suspend the rules. Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Palmer, to suspend the rules. Any comment on that? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, that allows us to go ahead and present the out-of-order Resolution 2023-02-01, out of order, is that correct? Okay, and that's presented by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mayor, Mark Dewitt, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, in regular session met the 27th day of February 2023. Resolution in reference lease of county parking lot behind the county administration building to the town of Rogersville. Whereas the town of Rogersville has recently experienced a growth of business in the downtown area, especially on Church Street, and whereas there is a lack of off-street parking for business owners and their customers in the Church Street area, whereas the Hawkins County owns a parking lot behind the county administration building, that is, for the most part, remains empty during the day, and whereas the town of Rogersville desires the Hawkins County allow business owners and customers of downtown businesses to use the above-mentioned parking lot. Therefore be it resolved that per the attached lease, the Hawkins County Commission approves the town of Rogersville use of the parking lot for a period of one year, the subject to extension as mentioned in the lease, and subject to 90-day termination as detailed in the lease. Therefore be it resolved that the Hawkins County Commission give the Hawkins County Mayor the authority to sign a document pertaining to the above lease. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second from Commissioner Gibson. And Commissioner Maddox, you're on the board.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Whenever, I know there's a need for parking, but whenever you've got special events going on for Rogers, stuff like that, they're not gonna block it off down there. Well, Pebble Creek Park, right, it's gonna be open all the time.
Block what off?
Back, back the jail park.
I think some of it will be, depending on whether the, it's in the event area. If it's in the event area, then it would be blocked off. It just depends on what the event area is, like, for instance, Heritage Day, you've got 35,000 people coming down here, so for the vendors and for the children's yard and some of the junk things, they need those for the trucks to be in there, so they will use that for that, during that period.
The yard park, behind the old jail, is that right?
Yes, yes. And, and we've been doing that, so Heritage Day's been going on 47 years, so we've been doing about 40 of it.
Does Commissioner Maddox say further? Anybody else? All right, hearing done, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. That's all business I have on the board. Motion to adjourn from Mr. Gibson, second from Commissioner Gillum. Mr. Carter, do you want to speak?
No.